Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and call the order, pardon me. Go ahead and call the order to Folsom City Council for Tuesday, February 13th. If the city clerk would please call the roll.
Council members Moran.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Miklos.
Here. So I have a special guest that's going to lead us in the pledge. Where is Tommy? Tommy, where you hiding? Come on, Tommy, come up front and you would lead us all in the pledge of allegiance. Come right up over the microphone, right there.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Tommy, before you leave, tell us what troop you're from.
I'm in 445.
Okay. And what level are you at right now?
I am first class.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for Tommy and certainly thank you for the scouts in the audience this evening.[64.57][64.57][applause] I've been in the mayor's office for an hour to kind of go over what we all do here and so I've made us all look good. So with that, city clerk, call the item. Next one.
Your next item is Agenda Update. Tonight, you have one update to the agenda and that is on Public Hearing Item 9B. This is a public comment letter that has been received. It's been provided to the council member and is also available to the public at the back table.
Okay. Yeah, next item, please.
Your next item is Scheduled Presentation Item 5A. This is the city manager's financial report for fiscal year 2017-18, second quarter financial report.
Mr. Francis, good evening. So we have an audience full of kids that says, "What's going to be the most exciting agenda item we have this evening?" And I said, "Naturally, it's going to be yours."[112.00][112.00][laughter] Okay, remember, gentlemen, I talked about math? Here we go.
Yeah, I'll make it as exciting as I can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jim Francis, your chief financial officer. Tonight, I'm going to present the second quarterly financial report for this fiscal year. So that covers the period July 1st of 2017 through December 31st and our projections on to June 30th of 2018. Real quick summary, this is going to be mainly positive news, which is always nice to be able to present to you. Our projected revenues for this year are $85.7 million. Our projected expenditures are $83.6 million. We expect to have roughly $2 million of increase in our fund balance, which would bring our fund balance up to 17 and 1/2 million. It's currently, at the end of last year, it was 15 and 1/2 million. And that would bring us to 21 percent of our expenditures. And so while your policy is 15 percent of expenditures, we certainly received your direction also to keep putting more money into the fund balance and we've tried to do that. Some of the specifics of the year. Our property taxes are right in line with what we had anticipated and are about 5 percent over the property tax last year. Sales tax at 23.7 is actually an increase of about 6 and 1/2 percent. The 24.7 last year is inflated due to some overpayments we received from other entities. So the 23.7 we have this year is about a 6 and 1/2 percent increase in our sales tax. Our charges for services are roughly flat with last year, a little more than anticipated during the budget. And our transfers in are at 8.8 million, are up about 2 million from last year and pretty close to the budget. And that's because we anticipated getting more gas tax money in this year. A little more detail on the revenue. You can see our park and rec fees are up slightly from last year and in line with the budgeted amount. Ambulance fees are flat from last year. Development fees are up considerably from last year and our anticipation in the budget. Building permits are also up at 1.5 million over last year and our anticipated amount. And the Office of Emergency Services reimbursement, we don't actually budget for that because we never know, in terms of the firefights, you know, around the state, how much of our time will be. But we're at about 650,000 this year, which is a little less than last year and certainly because we don't budget for it over the budgeted amount.
Jim, does that end up covering overtime for the guys that get involved in those fires?
Well, it's the overtime for the coverage we have back in the city for those people, yes. The major expenditure categories, salaries at 34.4 million are right in line with what we had anticipated, up about 5 percent from last year. Benefits at 24.9 million are up about 10 percent from last year. Most of that increase is your PERS increase. Your operations.
Jim, that's significantly less than was budgeted, so that's a good thing.
Yes, it is. We had, you know, at the time we budgeted, we had approximates from PERS as to what the rates would be.
Okay.
And while we did benefit from a little lower rate, it still was a significant, we're about a million and a half dollars more in the PERS account than we were the year before. And that's why it counts for the increase. But it wasn't, we expected it to be about 2 million of an increase. The operations and maintenance is up about 4 percent over last year at 19.8 percent, or 19.8 million dollars. And that is up from what was budgeted and that's due primarily to some contractual services that we've entered into.
That's a lot, though, 2 million dollars.
Pardon?
2 million dollars over budget is a lot.
Yeah, it's offset by the, on the revenue side, however. It's mainly in terms of development fees, where the developers are paying those fees and we also have expenditures that we pay out from that.
Well, except it's operations and maintenance, so what are we doing?
Well, our contractual expenses are in L and M accounts.
Like plan checking and stuff like that?
That's correct. Capital outlay at 2.7 million is a little over what was budgeted and that's because we had some vehicles that we carried over from the previous fiscal year that were authorized but not purchased. And debt service at 1.7 million is down slightly and that's because we had a partial payment debt service because we had the last payment on our GO bonds for this facility. So that was, it wasn't a full year payment and that's why it's down from the 19, 1.9 million.
Did we have a mortgage burning?
Yeah. Yeah, sort of. But we will, we will have a benefit of about 1.2 million because of that in next year's budget when we, when we talk about that. And this just shows, again, your general fund balance and how during the recession we went down to our low point in fiscal year 11 and now we're anticipating being at 17.5 at the end of this fiscal year. In terms of some of the other major funds, our water fund charges for services are up more than anticipated due to primarily the increased use. And our expenditures are down slightly from what was anticipated up over last year, but we still have a 1.2 million dollar surplus, all right, get this to work, from the 14.1 to 12.9 and that's, goes into our pay-as-you-go capital projects. Waste water fund charges are roughly flat over last year. Expenses are up but down from what was anticipated and we have a 1.4 million dollar surplus in that fund for the year, anticipated. Solid waste, the charges are flat, again, from the year before, up a little bit from where we anticipated it. Expenses are up. Again, we have about an $800,000 surplus in the solid waste fund. Transit enterprise fund is roughly offset by fees. The non-operating revenue is from the transit district as an intergovernmental revenue and this program and fund roughly breaks even over time. Our risk management fund, the charges for services are up. That's primarily because we had a number of vacancies before, in last year's budget. Our operational expenses have remained fairly flat. We have a unrestricted net position, which is similar to fund balance, if you will, at 7.9 projected for this, end of this year. And you can see the major expense categories, the shift because we had the incentive program, retirement incentive. Our active employee costs went down from the previous year, but our retiree health costs went up. Workers' comp has gone up slightly and so has liability insurance. Compensate leaves fund was, used to be on our watch list. If you remember, we were in a negative $2 million range. Now, we're now at a positive $1.1 million and we will be taking this fund off the watch And that's briefly my report.
Okay. Any of my colleagues have questions or comments for this item?
Yeah, just a quick comment. You know, outstanding in just, you know, looking at your chart of the surplus or the unrestricted fund balance there. And a number of us were on this council and we kept getting those reports from you and others back in 2007, '08, and '09 and it was the exact opposite. But we all did harbor that hope that things would turn around and we would maintain fiscal prudence and, you know, certainly reflected in that. So, you know, my thanks to city manager and everybody in this city for really holding the line on expenses, rebuilding those reserves for when we might need them again. So, so thanks for the report, Jim, but outstanding.
Great, great report, especially if one considers what's happening in some of the other jurisdictions in the region as we speak. So kudos to the current management and going all the way back to 2006 when we started the belt tightening, because thank goodness we did it.
I concur. First time I'm on the council, I sit in an audience for 20 years and they never see any reductions in force. I'd get elected and whatever we face, '09, but it's come back. That's good.
Sometimes, Ernie, when you say that, we think you're the cause. You've got to be careful.
Could be, you know.[801.32][801.32][laughter]
I second all those statements. It's inspiring to see that it's, I mean, there's percentage gains on that. It's really good, so congratulations.
So again, Jim, thank you as always, certainly the manager and as importantly, all the city employees, because everybody put their nose to the ground to make this happen and we've, we've built the city back up. Unfortunately, we know there's a rainy day that's going to be coming, I just hope it's not as severe as the last one we just went through and thank heavens we had the reserves for it. So we never missed a beat with the amenities that we presented, let alone public safety. So really, really good job, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Your next item is Business from the Floor and you currently have no request to speak.
Okay, this item is Business from the Floor. Anybody wishing to address the city council on any item not on the agenda can come forward, please. Not seen anybody run down in a panic to talk to us, so we'll move on to the next item.
Your next item is the Consent Calendar.
Okay, we have consent calendar. Anybody wishing to pull any item off consent for discussion?
I wanted to, I have a question on C. I want to recuse from E. And I have a question on F.
Move A, B, and D.
Second.
I'd like to make a comment.
Oh, on which item, Ernie?
I just want to comment, I think the last item.
Okay, so that's good.
I pulled it already.
Yep. So whatever I made the motion on.
A, B, D, and I seconded.
Okay, call the roll on those items, please.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay, item 7C, Ms. Clerk.
So item 7C is Resolution Number 10,071. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager or his representative to certify the right-of-way for the Green Valley Road Widening Project, Federal Project Number 5288, subsection 40.
Carrie, who does your item?
I understand why we're moving the roadway to the other side. That makes total sense. It seriously frightens me that we have to do this by way of leasing.
It's simply a mechanism.
Particularly given what's going on at the moment with the federal government, that really scares me.
It's actually pretty common. The leasing is a mechanism to gain the permanent access or the permanent right-of-way in that area will take five to seven years. It's a long process to go through the acquisition. Leasing is, it's a guaranteed right-of-way for the roadway and we will.
Immediately begin getting the permanent easement.
Okay, why does it take so long to acquire the permanent right-of-way?
Don't know. That's their process. Multiple, it has to go back through Washington and first through Colorado, then back through Washington to get authorizations.
Okay.
It's just a long process.
I'm not happy about it, but I'm not seeing any logical alternative, but it's really kind of ridiculous.
We, and there was no way to expedite that, given the work they were doing on Maad. They were unwilling to proceed forward, so we either wait the seven years to do those improvements or take the lease approach and we thought the lease was the best way to go.
Okay. And, you know, what's happened on Maad in a long time is that they're back there doing something every couple of years.
Right. And now with the dam raise, there's going to be more work over there, but they're comfortable with our proposal, moving to the south and widening that direction.
All right, I'll move the item.
Okay, you got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. And I think 7E is next.
7E is Resolution Number 10,073. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number One to the agreement with Quincy Engineering for Construction Management and Inspection Services for the Miscellaneous Water System Rehab Project Number One and Folsom Zoo Sewer Line Replacement Project and Appropriation of Funds.
I'm recusing from the contract because Quincy is a client of mine.
I'll move the item.
I'll second. Let's call the roll on 7E and show councilmember Howell is recused.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Item 7F, Ms. Clerk.
This one, I guess, is for Robert. I'm just curious as to why the resurfacing is as expensive as is being shown in here.
Meaning the concrete deck or the, or the plaster?
The combination of the two and that's partly because I know how much resurfacing costs because I've done it recently.
The, on the plaster side, it's because we have a lot of plaster square footage with a 50-meter pool and it was, it is far cheaper if we do all three pools at one time. We only, the only plaster failure to date is in the 14-foot depth of the 50-meter pool. But once that starts, we know that it is only a matter of time before we have other issues in the other pool, so.
I can tell you that the first one's going to be algae.[1095.51][1095.51][laughter]
So, so it's far cheaper after 17 years to do the project one time, so our, our plan, and this is a budget proposal for you to consider as we go through the fiscal year 18, 19 process, should you elect to do that project this year, we will complete the aquatic season through Labor Day and virtually the week after Labor Day, when we ordinarily close, we will be ready to start construction. So with the budget process that we have, if you approve the project, we'll be out to bid over the summer, award a contract, and do it.
And how many activities have to get moved to Vista?
Virtually everything.
And for how long?
90 to 120 days. So we'll have, we'll have a gap in our fall season operations revenue at the Aquatic Center.
So are we going to, are we going to try to reopen the facilities one at a time?
We're not that far into the staging and scheduling. If it's feasible, yes, but you, once you, you know, that once we give a site to a contractor, they own the site, they really need to have control for staging and operations.
Well, I'm just thinking that if they went in and did, you know, did move the operation, the plastering and the, and the deck repair work from, you know, say you start where the, where the kids play pool is and, and then move it in the other direction or vice versa because the kids, you know, that, that area's not going to be used in the, in the fall and the, in the winter anyway. But if it means we could get the other activities back in there.
We would certainly look at that. My recollection from having built the project is, once they were ready to plaster, it was a three or four-day plaster process that they just did one pool one day, the next pool the next day and, and so on. So it's staged so that the subcontractors are there on-site the least amount of time possible.
Okay. Just throwing that out there.
Big project, but we've had 17, 18 years of amazing aquatic service and.
That's, that's a long time for the uses we get.
Hundreds of thousands and millions of people through the gate.
Okay, I'll move the item.
I want to comment first of all. This is what you said, Robert, 17 years ago about when we did it, I give a lot of credit to Andy to stand up and push it. I give a lot of credit to the mayor for standing tall and getting us the votes that we needed. And, and the staff report, it said in the 17 years, over 4 million people used that aquatic center. So I think our vision way back in the late 90s were, has paid off.
Virtually everything in the city of Folsom, if we build it, they come.
Yeah, and it lasts too. So I think you've done a tremendous job there.
I'll still move the item.
I have a second from councilmember Gaylord, so call the roll, please.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Next item, please, under all business.
Okay, next item is 8A. This is appointment of an at-large member being the business owner within the Sutter Street sub-area to the Folsom Historic District Commission.
I'd like to nominate Rosario and I'd like to make a comment with that. My understanding is that Jeff has done a great job on that, on the Historic District Commission. However, he didn't reapply and I know from some online stuff, his, his house is for sale and he's planning to move out of town. That was as of three weeks ago, two weeks ago.
Okay, so I have a nomination for Rosario Rodriguez. There's any further nominations? Okay, call the roll on that nomination, please.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes.
And if they're really lucky, she'll bring tacos to the meetings.[1322.66][1322.66][laughter]
There may not be no meetings.
Next item, please.
Your next item is Public Hearing 9A. This is Community Facilities District Number 21. You have four resolutions to consider tonight. Resolution Number 10,075, Resolution Number 10,076, 10,077, 10,078, and first reading of ordinance Number 1281.
Okay. Mr. Francis, looks like it's your item.
I believe there's a, in the script, there's a couple of things before I get on.
Okay, so go ahead.
We don't open a public hearing until there's a staff report.
Right.
Do you want me to open, and have them?
Do you want to present first?
You want to present first before opening a public hearing?
Well, I, I can, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead and present first and then I'll open a public hearing.
Jim, while you're getting ready, can I have one question? I think of Public Works. I'm on page A2 of the staff report, top of the page. It's listed as Scott Road from Alder Creek Parkway to Street A. Is that supposed to be a different street name?
What was the road again? It was?
It's page, staff report, page 11 of 77, A2. Top of the page, it says, authorized facility include the following transportation improvements. And one of the bullet items is Scott Road from Alder Creek Parkway to Street A.
Street A would be Mangini Road.
Which Scott Road are we talking about? The one that?
That would be East Bidwell now?
That was what I was trying to clarify. I'd rather it was still Scott Road, but we should probably fix it in here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a election and public hearing for the formation of Community Facility District Number 21. And I'll give you a little brief outline of the district. On November 16th, Greg Ranch requested the city form this community, Community Facilities District. On January 9th, the city council declared its intent to form this district. Such formation is subject to the Melrose Act and various city policies regarding land secured financing. The area is on Plasterville Road and White Rock Road and has two parcels to it. The development will include approximately 136 single-family residential units and 287 high-density, single-family units. It's intended to provide funding for the backbone infrastructure and facilities, mainly water, sewer, wastewater, transportation facilities. There will not be any project-specific maintenance service associated with this Community Facilities The financing plan is structured with the following elements. It's levied through 2067, '68 at your discretion with, and begins with the pulling of a building permit. The tax, special tax will increase annually by 2%. The maximum range is 2,600 for a high-density, single-family home and 2,900 for a low-density, single-family home. The bonded indebtedness limit is 55 million. The financing will be either from bond proceeds or pay-as-you-go revenue. The pay-go is, goes 100% to the developers for the first 20 years and then 100% to the city if it's required. In any case, the city council retains after the debt service is paid and at your sole discretion, the right to extend, discontinue, or reduce the maximum special tax. This district is within your policy of being below 2% of the property tax and ranges right now at 1.88%. Your action will form the CFD and incur, deem it necessary to incur bonded debt, call for an election, have, declare the results of the election, and then have a introduction and first reading of the ordinance levying the special taxes. And that's my presentation.
Any other questions for Mr. Francis before I open a public hearing? Okay, so I'll now go ahead and open the public hearing. The formation of the city of Folsom Community Facilities District Number 21, White Rock Springs Ranch District, the extension of such district, the furnishing of specified types of public facilities within the district, the proposed rate and method of apportionment of the special tax to be levied within the district, and the proposed incurrence of bonded indebtedness in connection with the district. City clerk?
So notice of this hearing has been given in accordance with applicable law. As required by the Melrose Community Facilities Act and by prior resolution of this council, notice of this hearing was published once in the Folsom Telegraph on February 1 and notice was mailed to the landowners within the district on January 23.
The public hearing is now officially open. We will first have presentations by staff, which I wanted you to have ahead of time in case people had questions, that's why I put it there, about the district. After that, we will receive comments and questions, any protests from any interested persons. When all comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed. Anybody wishing to comment on this item is a public hearing. Your time is to do so now. I don't have any written requests. See no one coming down. We will go ahead and close the public hearing. The floor is, did that already? I have a script here to have to follow, to be very frank with you, to make sure we cover all the legalities. I know, Andy, you're loving all this.
Oh, yeah.[1724.83][1724.83][laughter]
Let the record say, Andy said, "Oh, yeah." Okay, so, public hearing is now closed. Confirmation that there is no majority protest? Ms. Clerk?
No written protests have been received from the landowners within the district, therefore a majority protest does not exist.
Okay, at this time, because a majority protest does not exist, it is appropriate for the city council to consider resolutions to form the district, to declare the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness within the district and to call a special election within the district. So city council, we need to consider to start approving Resolutions 10075, 76, and 77. They need to be done separately, so motions would be in order at this time.
I'll move 10075.
And motion, second, call the roll on that item.
As modified by councilmember Howell.
As modified, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yeah.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes.
I'll move Resolution 10076.
Second.
Motion, second, call that item, please.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. You're on a roll, Andy.
All right, I'll move Resolution Number 10- All right, I'll move resolution number one zero zero seven seven.
Second.
Motion, second, that item, please call the role.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes. Pursuant to resolution number one double oh seven seven, the election for the incurring of the bonded indebtedness, the levy of the special tax, and the establishment of the appropriation limit for the district is now open, and the clerk may conduct the election.
I've received the ballots, and finding that all ballots in the election have been submitted, I do declare the election closed.
Okay, so then I guess as clerk, proceed to canvass the ballot?
I've completed the canvas of the ballot for the special election related to the district held on February thirteen. The canvas was as follows. One hundred and fifty-three votes were cast in support of the measure, and zero votes were cast in opposition to the measure. Therefore, the measure was approved with a one hundred percent vote in favor.
I'll move resolution one zero zero seven eight.
I'll second that.
Better motion, second. Call the role.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes, and I guess you'll be signing a certificate of election results, so let the record reflect that. And then item D is yours, man clerk. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, city council's an introduction, first reading ordinance number one-two-eight-one, levying the special tax. Need motion for that?
Move that. And seconded by the vice mayor, so call the role on that item.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes, and with that, that item is concluded. So with that, man clerk, call the next item.
Next item is public hearing nine B. This is resolution number ten thousand sixty-nine, a resolution approving large lot vesting tentative subdivision map, small lot vesting tentative subdivision map, project design guidelines amendment, and inclusionary housing plan for the Mangini Ranch Phase Two subdivision project.
Good evening, Steve, how are you?
Members, Steve Banks with the Community Development Department. The application before you this evening is a request for approval of a large lot vesting tentative subdivision map, a small lot vesting tentative subdivision map, an amendment to the project design guidelines, and lastly, an inclusionary housing plan for the Mangini Ranch Phase Two subdivision project. I thought I'd share with you an aerial photograph that was taken fairly recently of the project area, and it gives you a good sense of where the project is located. It's centrally located within the Folsom Plan Area as outlined on the exhibit. Just to the south of the project is the Mangini Ranch Phase One project, which the council approved fairly recently. It is located on the east side of East Bidwell Street and on the west side of Placerville Road. What's also neat about this particular exhibit is you can see a lot of the infrastructure that's currently being constructed down there, and it's a pretty good view of the various infrastructures that are being constructed, including the roadways and other infrastructure improvements. As I noted, this project is located centrally within the Folsom Plan Area, and this is the approved Folsom Plan Area land use plan. And again, this exhibit shows you the location of the Mangini Ranch Phase Two subdivision project in relation to the overall plan area. Just a little bit of background for you. Back in two thousand and fifteen, the city council approved the Mangini Ranch Phase One subdivision project, which included a little over eight hundred single-family residential units. In September of two thousand and fifteen, the city council approved the Westland Eagle project. And what was significant about that approval is it actually reduced the amount of retail commercial space within the Folsom Plan Area fairly significantly, while at the same time increasing the number of single-family residential units within the Folsom Plan Area. And I've got some other statistics related to this piece of information I'll share with you later in the presentation. Earlier this year in April, the backbone infrastructure improvements began, and have progressed quite well in the last eight or nine months since that time. In November of last year, the planning commissioner approved Mangini Ranch Villages One and Two, a design review application. And those will be the first single-family homes that will be constructed in the Folsom Plan Area, and we expect construction of those homes to commence probably within the next one to two months within the Folsom Plan Area. And lastly, earlier this year on January seventeenth, the planning commission reviewed the subject application and recommended approval of this application to the city council. Some of the specific details regarding the project, as I mentioned, are seeking approval of a large lot map to create twenty-three individual parcels. Majority of those parcels are residential in nature. In fact, nine of those parcels are single-family, high-density parcels. There are four multifamily parcels. There are two park site parcels, as well as a school site parcel. The small lot map is proposed to create five hundred and forty-five single-family residential lots. There's also an inclusionary housing plan included with your packet this evening. The applicant is proposing to pay an in-lug fee to meet their inclusionary housing requirement. And lastly, the applicant's proposing-
Before you, can I stop you when you're talking about the inclusionary fee? Because we've got a letter that I'm sure you saw, and there's all sorts of commentary being thrown around out there about how this would be handled. Can you just explain for those that don't seem to understand where those fees are- The implication of the letter is that everything is going to get built north of the freeway, and that's not true.
That's not accurate at all. So as the homes are built within the Folsom Plan Area, a fee will be collected for each residential unit. Those fees will be put in the city's housing trust fund. And then at some point in the future, the city will work with a developer to identify sites throughout the city, whether it be north or south, and we'll be looking at multifamily sites to find a location for a developer to build affordable housing, a hundred percent affordable housing. And the city's done that successfully on a number of occasions recently, including on Sidley Street. And we have a couple other projects we've approved recently, the Bidwell, Bidwell mixed-use project on East Bidwell Street, as well as a project within the Parkway. So we've been very successful at implementing one hundred percent affordable projects.
And just for further clarification, the letter that we got tonight implies that that type of housing can only be built on property that the city of Folsom owns. That is absolutely not true.
That's incorrect.
So, thank you.
Well, Steve, as long as we're on there, I actually want to go back to one quick thing that maybe I didn't hear when you were talking about the vesting subdivision map. It was important to the public also here that six parcels are being preserved as open space.
That's correct. There's a significant amount of open space.
Because they heard houses and parks and stuff, multi-open space, there's six parcels for that. In addition to the inclusionary housing plan, I do agree with the letter that, you know, we've dispersed, you know, by design and certainly by responsibility, some of the affordable, well, all the affordable housing right now is a quote-unquote "north of the freeway." I think it's important that we concentrate on sites sooner than later, where they can be dispersed south of the freeway. And I know most of the landowners down there have been very, very good at doing exactly what we're talking about even now. So I'm comfortable with what's in there, but I think the letter does point out, you know, very succinctly that, you know, we've spread out where we have it here, so we need to make sure we spread out where we have it there, because it's not- And I agree with the way he called it. It really should be called workforce housing, instead it's affordable. And some people who want to make a campaign issue out of it, they call it low income. You're talking about teachers and police officers and nurses and whatnot, so these aren't what people envision in their head. It's affordability housing that they would not normally be able to afford. And so I'd like it dispersed as much on the south side, because we've already done, I think, a remarkable job on the north side. So I think that's the spirit and intent of the letter, and I think that spirit and intent is I know what the landowners are planning, so let's make sure we can follow through with that intent, and then basically put our money where our mouth is, so to speak.
Good comment.
Thank you.
And lastly, the last entitlement being sought this evening is an amendment to the design guidelines. And to your point, the original design guidelines focus primarily on single-family residential development. And the last year or so, the applicant and the city have been getting numerous contacts about building multifamily housing within the plan area. So they're adding the design guidelines to address multifamily development. And so the addendum creates design guidelines and development standards for multifamily development within the plan area. And so that's what the addendum entails.
And I looked through the design guidelines, and I think they were very well done.
I agree.
Particularly in light of the fact that we haven't had an architectural review commission in many years now.
So this is the site plan submitted by the project applicant, and I'll walk you through it briefly. Again, we have East Bidwell Street on the western boundary of the project site and Placerville Road on the eastern boundary. We have eight residential villages dispersed throughout the project area. And we have some in the bottom-left corner, in the northern portion, we have a triangular piece. And then interspersed with those single-family residential villages, we also have four multifamily sites centrally located within the subdivision. We also have Community Park East in the bottom-right corner, and a smaller neighborhood park located centrally within the subdivision. And adjacent to that, to the east, is Elementary School Number Two within the Folsom Plan Area.
That's its official name, Elementary School Number Two?
As of this morning, yes. And as Councilmember Miklos mentioned, there is a significant amount of open space within the subdivision. In fact, we have a tributary of Alder Creek which traverses the site, as shown in the green colors here. And we also have a number of trails, trails being constructed along that open space area for residents to take advantage of the open space. I would also note there are no changes to Measure W with this proposed project, and it's entirely consistent with the requirements of Measure W in terms of the amount of open space. This is a phasing exhibit. The applicant's proposing to develop the project in three phases over a course of years. The first phase in the bottom-left corner here concludes Villages One, Two, and Three, a little over two hundred single-family residential units. Phase Two is centrally located, Villages Three, Four, and Eight, as well as two of the multifamily sites. And the third phase includes the single-family development to the north, as well as the two park sites, the school site, and the multifamily site to the west. I would also note that the future fire and police stations are, will be located within this multifamily low-density site to the west here, adjacent to East Bidwell Street. This is the Mangini Ranch Phase Two project, superimposed with Mangini Ranch Phase One. So the boundary is the Alder Creek Tributary. Into the north would be Mangini Ranch Phase One, or Phase Two subdivision, which you're reviewing tonight. And Mangini Ranch Phase One subdivision would be to the south. As I referenced earlier, we expect the first single-family homes to be constructed within Mangini Ranch Phase One at this location we're appointing here, adjacent to East Bidwell Street. And so that's where we expect the first homes to be constructed within the next couple of months. In terms of the general plan and the specific plan, the proposal's entirely consistent with the land uses prescribed in the plan area, specific plan. The densities are entirely consistent with the densities allowed for each of those zoning designations.
Steve, isn't the net yield actually, from what they're entitled to, what they're actually getting approvals for, less?
If for Mangini as a whole or for this project?
This project.
This project's actually seeking a density transfer to transfer a number of units. I believe it's twelve units from Mangini Phase One. Mangini Phase One was mapped at fifty-one units less than they were allotted. And so there's a minor administrative modification process by which they can transfer those units from Mangini Phase One to Mangini Phase Two, and so they're transferring twelve units from Phase One to Phase Two.
But overall, it's less.
Overall, they're, overall, Mangini Ranch Villages, Phases One, Two are thirty-nine units below what was originally approved.
Okay.
I want to give you a little background, overview of traffic as a whole, before delving into the specifics of the traffic impacts of the proposed project, just to try and bring everybody up to speed a little bit. There's a lot of misconception that the plan area and the land uses and the circulation plans and a lot of the details magically appeared in the year two thousand and eleven. As this council knows, there are many, many years of public involvement and research and due diligence. And I wanted to bring up a date before that, and that's two thousand and five, when the city council adopted the annexation concept plan. And so there was a lot of work done prior to two thousand and eleven relating to land uses, relating to circulations, relating to the road network. And so I just wanted to preface this part of the presentation with that. And there are also a number of fairly major land use refinements that occurred between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and sixteen. As I referenced earlier, there was a significant change in the amount of commercial land within the plan area, a reduction of over two million square feet of commercial land within the plan area. At the same time, the number of residential units increased by over a thousand. And so in a lot of dialogue I'm hearing, a lot of focus is on the increase in the residential units as opposed to the decrease in the commercial land that's occurred. And again, over this five-year period, gained over a thousand homes, but lost over two million square feet of retail. The end result of that, from a traffic perspective, is that there's a reduction in seventy-two thousand trips on a daily basis within the Folsom Plan Area as a whole. That represents approximately thirty-five percent of all trips within the Folsom Plan Area. And so I thought that was fairly interesting information I thought I'd share with you this evening. We talked about this earlier, the financing plan, CFD has been approved and is required for each of the subdivisions within the Folsom Plan Area to cover the costs of all the infrastructure that's going to be required down there. But in addition to that, there are a number of additional traffic-related fees that are collected, not only for the project you're hearing this evening, but for other projects within the Folsom Plan Area. And I want to go through those real quickly with you. The SPIF, or the Specific Plan Infrastructure Fee, applies to projects south of fifty, but there's also a component that applies to north of fifty, and there's a specific dollar figure that is allotted to improvements for four intersections located north of Highway fifty. There's a county transportation development-
Could you tell us which intersections those are?
East Bidwell and Iron Point, Folsom Boulevard, Blue Ravine, Folsom Boulevard, Prairie City, and I can't think of the fourth, Blue Ravine, Prairie City. There's also a county transportation fee that's required of this project, as well as other projects in the plan area. And of note, the connector project does receive fees towards construction of the connector project along White Rock Road.
Sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
All of that is included in this survey, though. It's within the impacts on each intersection includes these changes happening, right?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Within the traffic study, this big binder thing, that includes all of that information within this survey, though, right?
There are, yes, correct. And I'll get to that in a future slide, but there are a number of mitigation measures from various environmental studies, and all of those are included with this particular project. All of those mitigation fees are assigned. And in fact, in fact, there are fifty-five mitigation measures specific to traffic impacts included as conditions of approval for this project.
Which are included in the conditions of approval, not necessarily in the traffic study. The traffic study was not focused on what happens on Folsom Boulevard, which is on the other side of the world from this project.
There was a supplemental traffic study prepared for this project, and the purpose of that was to make sure that the traffic was consistent with the two thousand and eleven EIR and the two thousand and fifteen Westland Eagle EIR. That was the purpose of the traffic study, to make sure there were no new impacts that weren't previously identified. In terms of freeway improvements, there's a Highway fifty interchange fee, and those funds can go towards intersection, interchange improvements, such as Empire Ranch Road, as well as the Oak Haven Interchange, and also towards auxiliary lanes within the city limits of Folsom. And lastly, there's a Measure A sales tax contributions which go toward road maintenance and improvements. And the interesting thing about that is, for the first number of years, there aren't going to be improvements or maintenance to be made on roads within the plan area, because those will be new roads. And so those fees actually will probably be transferred for use north of fifty for the first number of years with this project. And lastly, I want to talk about the fair-
I just want to clarify that, because that may or may not happen. That will depend upon what the Public Works Department and the traffic engineer puts forward in terms of request for Measure A sales tax money.
Okay.
So I don't want to mislead anybody into thinking that that's going to be the case.
Point well taken. And lastly, I want to talk about this. This project and other projects within the plan area are required to pay their fair share contribution towards improvements, both in the plan area and north of fifty. And essentially, what that means is they're paying their fair share. So if you have an intersection, and I'll give an intersection, has twenty thousand vehicles traveling through that intersection currently today, and this project adds one thousand trips to that intersection. Their responsibility is one-twentieth of that impact. They're not responsible for the twenty thousand existing trips that are at that particular intersection. So that's what this project and other projects in the plan area are responsible for, and that's what their fair share contribution would be.
And I also want to point out that that is the entire traffic volume over a twenty-four-hour time period.
That's correct.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might, it's probably also worth saying that those are based on state statutes. That's not a Folsom rule. The whole process of developing nexus for exactions from the development community is taken directly from state law.
And then delving down to more specific impacts associated with the project that's before you this evening. As I noted, there are two secret documents that were prepared, the two thousand and eleven EIR and the two thousand and fifteen Westland Eagle EIR, as well as backbone infrastructure EIR, and there's a water EIR. And all of those, four environmental documents, and all their mitigation measures are applied to this particular project this evening. And the conclusion from the analysis, which is included in the big binder, which I can see in front of you on your diocese, is that there were no new significant impacts from this project that were not previously identified in the prior environmental studies. So that's a pretty important thing to state. In terms of traffic specifically, the applicant is required for a number, to do a number of things. One, they are required to construct onsite improvements for the development of their subdivision. Two, there are some offsite improvements they are required to construct, and I'll show those two in a moment. And lastly, as I just touched about on, there are fifty-five mitigation measures specific to traffic that this project will be subject to, and those are included as conditions of approval in your staff report. So the conclusion is, from all of this, is that this project, the Mangini Ranch Phase Two subdivision, will not have impacts, or will have impacts, that are equal to or less than originally anticipated with the prior environmental documents.
So within that EIR review, though, the level of service was lowered at that point, and that's the problem I had with it, because out of those fifty-five mitigations, most of them are payments into- are payments into some sort of fund, which doesn't necessarily, to me, mitigate the fact that it's a lower level of service compared to north of 50, right?
I'll try and get that in another slide, if I can.
Looks like you're going to comment. Well, I just wanted to clarify that the EIR doesn't establish the level of service. The level of service was established in the specific plan that was adopted by the council in 2011, and the specific plan effectively, as specific plans will do, modified the general plan. And so the EIR just analyzes the impacts relative to the policy framework that's existing at the time, but doesn't actually change any of the city's policies.
So if I'm jumping a slide, we can come back, but I definitely want to go back to the comparison between general plan, level of service, versus the amendment in the specific plan, level of service. So I don't know if you're going to get into that, but...
And I just offer, there's no proposed amendment to the specific plan.
No, but it's already happened, though.
Correct.
Yeah.
This is a couple maps before you. On the left is a map showing the phasing plan for the improvements with the proposed subdivision. And I'm not going to try and go through all the colors with you and describe all the colors, but as I mentioned, there are three phases with this project, and various requirements improvements are required with each of the three different phases, as shown on the phasing map on the left-hand side of this exhibit. And these are all onsite improvements that the applicant is required to construct with the subdivision. Those will be constructed as the three phases progress. On the right side of the exhibit, there are three circles you'll notice, and these are off-site improvements required of the proposed project, and these are tied to specific milestones, specifically building permits.
Steve, there's actually four circles.
Four circles, thank you. So in green, at the 236 building permit, I'll give you an example, in the upper-left-hand corner, it's hard to read, but at the 236 building permit for this project, the applicant is required to construct a traffic signal and signalize this intersection. This is Mangini, I'm sorry, Alder Creek Parkway and East Bidwell Street. And down at White Rock Road and East Bidwell Street, that same trigger applies, but it's actually a little later. At the 281st building permit, the applicant will be required to construct a traffic signal at this location. At the multicolored circle, which probably threw me off, in the three versus four, there are two thresholds. At the first building permit, it will be stopped, sign control of this particular intersection. And then at the 496 building permit, a traffic signal would be required to be constructed by the applicant at this location.
Right now, it looks like the Pepsi logo.
It does look a little bit like the Pepsi logo. And in the bottom-right, at the intersection of Placerville Road and White Rock Road, at the 496 building permit, again, this is an off-site improvement, there's a requirement to modify, restrict, actually, the turning movements from southbound Placerville onto White Rock Road. And those are all off-site improvements.
Just out of curiosity, what was the rationale behind that elimination of the left turn? Is that going to trap all the shoppers from Eldorado Hills in Folsom?
Mark Rackavan, Engineering Manager with Public Works Department. The rationale for that particular improvement is the Capital Southeast Connector Project, which is an expressway currently under design, which has limited access at several key points. This was one of the intersections that was identified as not a major access point along the expressway, and therefore...
Plus, it's also where the rail crossing is.
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess I'll talk to you offline about how people want to, if they're in Folsom and they want to get back to Eldorado Hills. They may come back looking for that EVA access to get removed, Steve.
You never know.
As I noted, an environmental document has been prepared showing that the project complies with the prior environmental documents, and their number of mitigation measures that have been included as conditions of approval for this project in your package this evening. As I noted earlier, the Planning Commission reviewed this project on January 18th and unanimously forged their recommendation for the city council to approve the Mangini Ranch Phase Two subdivision project. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. I know the project applicant is also here this evening, if you have questions of the project.
Roger, you had something you wanted him to go back to?
Yeah, pardon me. Sorry if I'm blinking a lot. The biggest issue I have that I've heard from residents, as well as myself, is just the level of service standard. I mean, I don't know, I wasn't here at the time when it was, you know, the amendment was made to the specific plan. Traffic is one of the biggest topics right now in the city. It's no secret. So adopting a level of service lower than C, when we're already striving at a level of service F at some of those intersections at peak times, just strikes me as a policy I can't get behind, because if, I mean, it's like, I mean, I know Everett tells me, "Don't look at it as a grade," but I look at it as a grade because they survey it as a grade. So it's hard for me, as a council member, to explain to folks that, you know, we're doing this. When I look at these deficiencies and I look at the mitigation measures, it simply says payment, and then it's a significant unavoidable issue. So I guess that's, it has nothing to do with the project. I have major issues with the policy.
So what I've actually, if I may interrupt for a second, because I'd like Roger to finish his thoughts, and I apologize for not saying this earlier. What I'd like to do is, all of us sit on committees and commissions, we throw all these acronyms out and all this stuff like that, let's explain what we're talking about so people watching this at home or here in the audience, what level of service means and so on and so forth. So what I'd like to do is, Roger, specifically go down to either an intersection or a project, explain what level of service is, where we're at, and what we're talking about, you know, so they get an idea of what really we're talking about. Because you could be talking about level of service all over the city, I'd like to bring it into specifics so we can actually then zero in and try to do something that everyone knows about, so we can talk about it.
True. And to that point, that's kind of one of the issues that I have, is that this is a lot of information, and, you know, out of 2,000 pages, like, there's 500 pages on this traffic study on one simple project south of 50, and that's a problem. Not a problem from you, and it's not planning or staff, it's just a lot of information. Legally, we're bound to give it and read it, but going through this, when I look at that, you know, level of service standard, and correct me when I'm wrong, because I definitely can't be wrong, north of 50 is a standard of level of service of C, right?
Yes.
So that's the general plan adoption. A level of service is essentially a time grade through an intersection versus how long you're going to sit in a stoplight.
Correct.
No, that's not entirely true.
Not entirely.
Well, I mean, there's more factors, but essentially, you can boil it down to that.
No, but this is an important clarification, Roger. It's not about the amount of time that you're sitting at a stoplight. There's different levels of service and different levels of measuring, whether there's a four-way stop, whether it's a freeway lane, whether it's an expressway, or whether it's a signalized intersection. If there's a signalized intersection, you cannot assume that the light's always going to be green, so you're going to sit at the light when the light is red. The level of service decreases, and what we're talking about is peak hour traffic. So the highest traffic volumes in the morning, for one hour, and the highest traffic volumes in the afternoon, for one hour. At the locations that are close to the freeway right now, and that, because that's the predominant data that was included in the traffic report here, we get to an unacceptable level of service for one hour in the afternoon peak hour. It never goes below level of service C.
Standard, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the standard throughout the day. If we do go below during those peak hours, right?
We do go below during...
Level of service is measured by the greatest impact for the greatest time, which would be morning commute, afternoon commute. It's not what you have all around a day and average it.
So the statement of no new impacts from this project is no new impacts per the amendment to the specific plan to lower the level of service, right?
Just to be sure that we're keeping track with what happened here, there wasn't an amendment to the specific plan that created a change in the level of service. The original specific plan was adopted in 2011 with this current level of service that amended the general plan specific to this particular project, which is essentially what specific plans do. They create a carve-out in a general plan area for a particular set, and usually for large projects. The east area was a specific plan. This is a specific plan. The EIR in itself, or this project in particular, isn't contemplating a change in the level of service.
So actually, I think it might be helpful for Councilman McGee, or it says he wasn't here, I think it was just a few years back, something came up about some of these improvements. I know we just had that update, what, a few months ago, about especially Iron Point, East Bidwell. This city council, short of Roger, of course, made a, took a vote, says, "We're not doing four-lane intersections, massive intersections, because what we tried to do, and have been very successful in this city," and I don't remember exactly, Roger, and I apologize the exact date, but it was a few years back, that basically said, "No, we, you know, we're okay with living with one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon, because we're also trying to encourage people to use the bike lanes, the bike paths, pedestrians, alternative modes of transportation, and we didn't want to spend millions of dollars to put these gigantic intersections in so that we have free flow 24 hours a day, when we're really talking about an hour generally in the morning." And this is predominant throughout all regions, not just us. An hour in the morning, an hour, but we've taken an official vote, policy, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm missing something, all you guys down there, that we want to make alternative means available to people. And if Tony Powers are here, he'd be standing in front of us, because he's been one of the leaders in this committee for many, many years, to make sure we put bike paths even on our streets. So I understand what Roger's saying, and you've got some very good questions to put in front of us. So I think we need to integrate his questions and what the policies are, and I apologize for if it wasn't spelled out well in here, but he has a very good questions and a learning curve that we all should hear, potentially if there's something different. But at least from a policy standpoint, we've been reluctant, and I'm probably hoping we still will be reluctant to put these massive intersections, these massive roadways in there to accommodate maybe a couple hours a day, when we do want to encourage people, while we have 50-some-odd miles of trails on and off-street, to get people to do other things, because that also helps our air quality. See, another point that comes into my mind, that this, actually, you'll hear later in my comments, closing comments, about what we're going to do as council members, you know, we have a new general plan coming into play, and I've heard, and Roger makes a good point, it's the old general plan, then we have some amendments, blah, blah, all this stuff going back and forth. The new general plan is going to have an opportunity for the entire public at all different levels of the city, including the city council, planning commission at all, to talk about levels of service of traffic, how it's measured, you know, when is the bad, when's the good, the different intersections, Kerry pointed out, whether they're signalized, commercial, residential stop signs, that all. I think that's also an additional opportunity for us to take a lead in describing and educating the public on what that is all about through all these hearings that are coming up. So I only bring that because, you know, and again, it's, there's so much information out there, sometimes it takes a hearing like that to remember this stuff. So I apologize, Roger, because that should have been gotten to you sooner than later.
I agree with that, and that's not the issue here, is that we're voting on policy right now on something like level of service. So, I mean, we don't pay, this, south of 50 is paid for by developers within infrastructure. So consistency is a key term, so why would it not be consistent north of 50 via south of 50 with the same level of service? It's already, we're already not, and whether, okay, let's boil it down to peak times, right? We already don't, I mean, it's no secret that it's getting worse, and so as it goes forward, I want to see policy, and maybe this is something we can look at further, and I'm only one of five, but I don't see it being, I don't know why we would make it a lower level of service, I just have a problem with that. And that's why I have a problem with this, and reading this, every other word is, you know, insufficient, lower level F, E. To me, looking at it, I mean, maybe, I'm not, you know, I'm not an engineer, and I haven't been on the council for as long as you have, so I get that, there is some learning, but I can just tell you right now, it's not consistent.
Okay, just, we're not discussing a policy issue here, we're looking at maps.
Yeah, what I'm saying, I'm saying, it doesn't, it's not, I think that that conversation, dialogue regards to policy needs to happen before this stuff comes up. I mean, I just feel...
No, that, my personal feeling is that that dialogue needs to happen when we talk about the general plan update, which I think we're going to be doing in the next 60 days.
I think his point's well taken, what he's saying is, based on the information that's in front of him, he's asking questions, and whether it be you, or Mike, or Mark over there, or whoever, he's wanting clarification of what's in front of him, how it'd be spelled out, to understand the different levels of traffic service that we may be pointing out, possibly degradating downward. And I know the mitigation measures are supposed to overcome that, so maybe we just need a further clarification on some of those measurements and stuff that...
And I just want to add one thing, because we've actually already talked about this, I don't think anybody's making the connection, though. The traffic study that's affiliated with this project is adding, in the PMP, I think it's 503 trips.
Correct.
Am I right? Is it 503? Good. Memory hasn't gone yet. So we currently, at that intersection, already have a really bad level of service even before this project. So the impact of this project on the level of service over by in and out is insignificant.
Well, yeah, there's...
Which is why we had a conversation six months ago, that we're going to eliminate that U-turn at in and out, and we're going to try to make some changes to eliminate, to move traffic through that intersection further. And the traffic fees that are going to be paid under this project are going to be used to backfill what that, what those improvements are going to be.
I totally respect that opinion, and I'm not trying to be a dead horse, but that's two intersections out of seven. I'm talking about the five south of 50 that aren't built yet. Once they're built, they're failure. They're a level of service F, per this study, per this survey.
No, they're not.
It says it right here.
Let's, I think he's addressing this to Steve, so Steve, or...
I think this would be a good time, actually, for the applicant to introduce himself to you, and then we can walk through some of these questions as well.
Okay. Mike, whoever?
Sure, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Mike McDougall, representing the applicant. I didn't have a presentation, because I think staff's done a very good thorough job, and I really had nothing to add, other than we spent a significant amount of time, about eight months, making sure this map is entirely consistent with the specific plan. As you can tell, there's a few collector roads, backbone roads that run through it. Well, that kind of sets the criteria for how we develop the rest of the property. So we had to make sure all the grades worked, all the intersections worked, all the turning lanes were accounted for at full buildout, and all the turning pockets. So we wanted this map to come forward and be entirely consistent with the specific plan, for which it is. We are not changing any policies, we are not adding any units, we are not moving land uses around, it's entirely consistent. Now, with respect to the level of service, and forgive me for wading into this conversation, I know it's really the city staff and your discussion, but Mr. Palmer's correct, is that the level of service policy was established at the time the specific plan was adopted. South of Highway 50 is a different land plan than north of Highway 50. We built that plan around a walkable community, a transit corridor, double the miles per capita that you have, a bike trail is up here, is designed to get the people out of the vehicles. That's the way we designed that property. We did not come in and try to shoehorn transit into an existing development pattern where people are already set in their vehicles. Now, if we were to establish a level of service C or B, we don't go less than D, understand that, there is no F in the plan area.
That's a correction, I wanted to make you right, it said D, not F, so that's my fault.
Yes, huge point, huge point. And that's why we do those traffic studies, is to ensure that as a project like this comes forward, we look at what's this project and the aggregate that's been built, to ensure that the intersections are phased and built in time to ensure the level of service does not go below D. It doesn't go to F. We can't do that. That'd be in violation of the specific plan and environmental policies that you've established.
So Mike, does that mean that during the peak hours, it's not going to go below D?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And we have timing triggers that your staff just showed you, when we hit 236 building permits, we have to go widen and improve Alder Creek and East Bidwell, Old Scott Road, or else we don't pull a 237th building permit, because that's the trigger. Now, had we picked a level of service C, say for south of Highway 50, Alder Creek Parkway may be a six-lane road all the way through. East Bidwell Street, or Scott Road, would be an eight-lane road. How is that a walkable community? We had to design these roadways parallel to Highway 50, Mangini Parkway, Alder Creek Parkway, and the ones north and south, Prairie City Road, Oak Avenue, East Bidwell, Empire Ranch Road, to accommodate all the traffic that's external to our own project. So, sure, we could have hit C and had big thoroughfares, but is that what we wanted? Is that what makes Folsom a livable community? No, it sounds more like LA to us. So that's why we have the standard we have, and we have the land plan the way we have it.
And I think it's also important to add to that, that it's not really about what you guys wanted, it's what the city thought was appropriate. You guys didn't really, you weren't really calling the shots, you were kind of working within the framework that the city and the council established.
To put things in perspective, Eldorado County has many intersections at F. Their threshold is we will not hit F. That's the way they look at things.
I don't think Eldorado County necessarily even plans for that, but...
So I think Roger's still...
Well, my point is, it's all relative, and you're really not in a bad situation. Well, my point is, it's all relative, and you're really not in a bad situation, you have momentary periods of problems, which you've identified and you're going to fix. But I think that needs to be put in perspective.
So Roger gets to follow up?
I just don't think you're, I mean, with all due respect, I don't think that's correct, I don't think Folsom spoke and said they don't want something in particular, I think in general, it's the council's position to make policy, and from what I'm hearing, and maybe it's different, I, I'm hearing that this is a concern. I don't think nice houses are a concern, I don't think, you know, a walkable community is concerned, it's the byproduct of those things coming north of fifty and combining with being consistent south and north. So, I'm just, I mean, we don't even need to talk about it anymore, we can, that's just my opinion on the level of service, we do need to talk about that, I feel, as policy, and look at it, like you were saying, Mayor, but, I don't know, I think the feedback isn't that, I think it's different.
Well, I, I'm going to jump into that one, because I, I know you're hearing something, but generally speaking, and you'll, and you've seen a couple already, when there's something, well, I'll even back up, so in, in, from two thousand four to two thousand twelve, I think, when we did annexation?
Right.
Eighty, eighty-two to eighty-eight percent of the population was here, and after Measure W passed, up until we annexed it around two thousand twelve, whatever, the people in the audience are pretty much what you're seeing now, because the residents built the plan, so it was not like they didn't know what was coming. And even after Measure W passed, we had eight more years of public hearings after public hear, we must have had almost a hundred even after that, including LAFCO coming here, actually held a hearing here, that came out from Sacramento. And so I hear what you're saying, so when we set policies based on, and I'll call it what it is, it's a community plan, so we, we based our policies on, we want walkable, bikeable, you know, mass transit, we got light rail, we got transit corridor for south of fifty and this and that, we didn't want big intersections, nor I hope we never vote for any, because that, to me, would just be, that's, that's an introduction for more speed. We're already having issues with Empire Ranch Road and some of the others, so that was another design criteria that we put into place, the walkable streets, the streetscape, all that kind of stuff. And then from two thousand twelve to now even, yes, we hear on a regular basis that traffic is always traffic, always traffic, from one year. On the other years, where's all our amenities, where's our amenities, where's our amenities, where's our amenities? So it's, it's a fine balance. So, what we're doing on a regular, consistent basis, is what we just said six months ago, we're tweaking some of our more serious intersections with, especially not only the peak, but just to be safer, no more U-turns and blah, blah, blah. But we did set, and the community set a plan out that, the community built the plan with the, the town center south of fifty, with the mass corridor south of fifty, future light rail extensions if we can do that, fifty-some-odd more trails, or miles of trails down there, I mean, all of that. So, I guess what I'm hearing is, yes, we've accepted that we will not go below D, but knowing that D's only two hours a day, one in the morning, one in the evening, but it also matches the policy of the city and the, and not only the city council, but the residents of, we want a walkable, bikeable, safe community, instead of just a bunch of cars whizzing by us. So, if we need to change those policies, that's one thing, we certainly can't do it when we're looking at subdivisions that have met our policies that were created, or from two thousand four to even sitting here today. So I don't disagree that Roger's hearing some, we hear it on a regular basis, at least we're doing something about it, but at the same time, we're also giving the community what they've been asking for since I've been here, since ninety-four, was, I want more bike trails, I want to be able to walk, I want to feel safe, slow the traffic down, you know, do something about it, and the police, I see the chief walking, can only be at so many intersections so many times, the motors can only be so many, so many, and now, we have to put police sometimes on the trails, because it's a stupidity going on out there. So, it's a fine balance, and I agree with you, Roger, we have to stay on top of this on a regular, consistent basis, you'll never eliminate it, you're always going to have some congestion somewhere, but as I tell everybody, I'd rather sit in congestion in my own city than have to drive someplace else to take care of my business.
I'd rather not do it at all, I'd rather just.
Who wouldn't?
Make it, I'd ra, I mean, we're, we're on the growth curve right now, so I don't understand why we're not preparing ourselves for that growth. I mean, to me, I get pegged as being anti-development or against south of fifty, but I'm not against it, I'm listening to residents. So, you know, Measure W is a great point, we always say, residents voted on Measure W, there were sixteen thousand voters who voted yes on the Measure W. Today, I mean, the population's different, there's more voters, there's people from two thousand four who never had a say in that, and they're speaking loud about it. So, I'm, I'm up here doing what I think is, is what I'm hearing, and it's not against the project, it's simply put, I'm not, I'm not for a lower level of service. So, if that's not, that's something that's within your, obviously it's not, it's, it's up here, so it's.
And if I can add, this conversation similar was held at the planning commission, and Commissioner Rathell, I think, said it best. When he asked me, he goes, what is your average daily LOS? That's why they don't look at it that way. He goes, okay, so it's peak hours, morning and evening, yes. What is the other twenty-two hours? Well, between A and B, we're talking about East Bidwell and Iron Point, they're free-flowing, they're great intersections. He said, if I had to trade off, as a resident and a member of the community, I would rather live with that one hour than have a huge intersection. To me, that's just now, that was his opinion, that was his view, but I thought, you know, that's the debate.
Traffic's not like that here, though.
Pardon?
Traffic's not an A and B at these intersections, except for, and we've had this conversation before also, it's not just peak hours, we, we have, we have traffic coming through the city, we're obviously a pass-through to Eldorado Hills, you know, to Rancho Cordova, over to Roseville, we have all these different things. So, I, I, it's just, I don't, it's, the traffic isn't like that, and it's not going to be like that. And, and the minute we onboard, granted in fifteen years, eleven thousand new homes, you know, folks are worried, residents are worried, and the message is, you know, I've received flyers with intersection and infrastructure and all this stuff, the message is, we're paying our fair share, but honestly, what does that even do? What does that mean? Once it's built, it's built.
I, I think it's important, Roger.
Before you go there, Kerry, there's something I have to say now, that, that just disturbs me, when I keep hearing this over and over, and, and some of the comments I don't agree with on social media. When I keep hearing people say that they weren't here in two thousand four and didn't vote for Measure W, and that's fine, they weren't here, but to continue to hear people say that they couldn't participate since two thousand four, that is not only false, it's, it's disrespectful to even say that. Two thousand four, eighty-three percent of the population that's currently existing today was here in two thousand four. So from two thousand four to two thousand twelve, we did eight years of processing to annex that city, to annex that property south of fifty. Almost a hundred hearings occurred between two thousand four and two thousand twelve. So when people tell me they didn't have a chance to participate, I'm sorry, I'm not accepting that, I'm not accepting that.
This stuff wasn't available at that time.
What's that?
This stuff wasn't available, so as we keep pushing forward.
No, actually, actually, this was available, and that's called a master development agreements, and public hearings at all levels, including planning commission, as well as city council, as well as public community meetings, there was a ton of it. Two thousand five, two thousand six, somewhere in there, we hired a firm, I can't remember who they were, we had either six or eight charats next door, electronic tabulations, the whole kind of thing, there was eight or nine hundred people participated from the community, not us, the community. And so, when I hear people say they have a voice, or they haven't had a voice heard, or so on and so forth, where are they? We're having this discussion tonight, where are they? And so, reason being is because.
They elect us to be here for them, that's the difference.
Okay, well, okay, then.
I don't disagree with you, so you're making your point, I respect that, but we can move on, because.
No, we, we can move on, but I, I, I'm not going to accept any member sitting up here saying that we're not including people, when we're inviting people constantly, I just had, you know, twenty Boy Scouts, and they asked a whole bunch of questions, they're very knowledgeable, they know what's going on, they're asking questions, I'm okay with that. But when people say, we're not hearing them, we're not hearing them, other than, you hear some, I hear some, we all have our little sphere of influence, if you will, but when there's a big issue in this city, they're down here, they're down here. And so, you know, we can only do the best we can based on the design of what the community plan was, we're implementing the community plan, and so there may be eleven thousand residents down there in the next thirty to forty years, because it's a thirty to forty year plan, but what, what key point is missing is, that's almost going to be as self-sufficient as north of fifty, so not all those eleven thousand residents are going to hit Iron Point and East Bidwell, because they're going to have as much opportunity to stay on that side of the freeway as they have on this side of the freeway, not to mention the expressway that's going to be built, the, the connector, then the expressway within the project is going to be built, and, and all those other opportunities they have. So, I, I take a little exception when I'm hearing people say they're not being included or not being heard, trust me, when they want to really let us know something happens, they're down here, they're emailing us, they're this and that, yes, we have traffic, we'll always have traffic, twenty percent of the issues in any city is always going to be traffic. Our job is to balance the traffic, balance the amenities, and listen to the policies that the community wants us to put in place, which we did, with the master development agreements, with individual, the specific plans, based on all the participation as we sit here today. That's all I was trying to say. Ernie?
Yeah, I, I haven't said nothing, and that's unusual. I sat in this town for the first five years, I came in nineteen eighty-five, between eighty-five and ninety, I didn't miss a planning commission meeting, a city council meeting, a park commission, I, because I was ignorant from my military days about community operations. And I can assure you, when people say they weren't involved, these corridors, these, these seats were packed, back in those days when we built this north Folsom, okay? It was packed, and if you think there wasn't a lot of dialogue, you're wrong. Now we've gotten the new age, new young people coming in, and we, we rely on mass media, okay? We didn't really have that then. They came here and they sit up at these podiums and raise hell with the council and the commissions and all that, that's the way they got to think. And I remember distinctly, the battle cry for most of people, we don't want six-lane roads because there'd be racetracks. They, they just constantly said that. So, if they weren't good then, why do we think they would be good in the future, in order to bring down the level of, of service? It, it doesn't make sense, okay? So we got new people, and they have new ideas, and they think we can go back. Fine, come on here, as I told them last, remember the last meeting we had, I said, you know, we don't charge to come here, you can come here free, and you can get up at this podium and have your say, even if it's three minutes, you can have your say, bring your friends, you got thirty minutes, and you got ninety minutes, you get enough people. I just can't buy this, okay? I, I know now, being as long as thirty-two years, or whatever, service, resident in this town, I know where the traffic's going to come, and most of the time, I avoid it. Now, so you retired, so what? When you work eight to five, you know when you're going home, you know where you got to be to work. You plan your trips to get there, to avoid this, this thing. And to me, I'd rather, I'd rather sit for a few minutes in, in a line and have some guy pass me at eighty, ninety mile an hour, to get wherever they go, and jeopardize my life, I don't want that.
I don't know what the fear-mongering is with six lanes versus eight lanes, that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that a lower level of service.
But in order to bring it down, either you cur, you cur the development, or you curb the number of lanes, or you add the number of lanes, you bring it down, that's what I'm saying, Roger, you know? I, I, I just think we, we're depending too much on mass media, and there are only say four or five thousand people of an eighty thousand town to dictate there, and then you don't get five or ten people out here at the maximum, okay? Now they say, well, that's the new way, you got to get used to it, you know? I'm the old-fashioned way, come out and tell these five of us what the hell you think. Don't just, I, I've watched media, and I don't respond too much, because I get too emotional, and I wouldn't be, I don't want to do that. But I hear so much disinformation, and so many attempts to establish boogeymen, and primarily, this is going to be a bigger year, because this is an election year, you got to have a boogeyman to get elected. Well, no, you don't, you got to have a record of community service and dedication that'll get you elected, okay? But you can get elected otherwise, too, that's, we see that nationwide, that happens. All I'm saying is, is my recognition is that, yeah, I, I can't remember, I, I remember some knockdowns to build a library, knockdowns to build a pool, knockdowns, I mean, you talk about public participation, we had it back in those days, and what have we got today? Pretty darn good town, okay? And I think this, south of fifty, if, if the developers do what they say, and that's our job up here, that's my job, is to be sure you do what you said you're going to do, and then your job is to be sure the city does what it says it would do, as a contract, and we're supposed to honor that, that, that's what trust is all about, okay? That's what this community is, why people want to come here. And I don't blame the people that are telling us that they don't like things, because they don't know the background, half of them, I, I don't know, I bet you, if you surveyed the number of people that responding, that Roger's listening to, and I'm listening to, and Steve's probably listening to, anybody's looking at media, you're going to listen to it, they're fairly recent, okay? And that's okay, just because they're new, that doesn't mean they don't have a right to say what they want to say, they can. But overall, when you're looking at the big picture, okay, you just got to do it. When we built that Aquarius Center, there's a lot of opposition in, in the higher levels. Four million people have used it in seventeen years, so our vision was right then, and some of the stuff we're talking now is going to be right. So I say, we got to be careful about the, I don't want racetracks, I don't want six-lane roads in this town, okay? I'll sit for ten minutes, okay, I'll plan my trips, or I'll tell my family, go early, don't wait for, you know, when I go to Kaiser tonight to get some medicine for the cold I've been fighting, I knew how long it's going to take me, so I could go there and get here in time. Hey, you got to plan, you can't be spontaneous. Now, if you li, if you work in San Francisco, because you get the salaries San Francisco pays you, but you can't afford to live there, you live here, and I'm happy you do live here, okay, some tremendous people, I can't guarantee you can get a boom, and you're out on Highway fifty, and boom, you're down in San Francisco, that doesn't work. So I think you got to balance the quality of your life and what you, what you expect. So I, I think, I think our alternative, and I, I agree with Kerry, and I agree with Steve, there are peaks, I can go by certain times in this town, three o'clock in the afternoon sometimes, and I'll say, where is all this traffic coming? Well, it depends, if you look at the prison ships, and you look at intel ships and all that, you're going to run into that. As soon as you get educated, it won't happen. And then when you look at, I get in my car and drive my children to the school, okay? Well, if you're in that early morning or mid-afternoon, you're going to, you, you can justify your trip, because you got to get your child there. But if you don't have no child, and you're stuck in there, you either try to get out on the road, or even in the road, well, okay, you're going to, and, and that's okay, because you got to get your kids to school, I have no problem with that, I'm willing to sit and wait, but I'm more willing to avoid it if I can. So I'm saying, yeah, it, it sounds awful to say it's going to be Measure D and F, because I, 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 I think I, almost everyone that, that contacts us, we think that's all day long. You can go down Nataoma Street about nine o'clock at night and have F, it's just like an isolated place. You can go over the Nataoma Bridge, most of the time, other than, say, three to five, or six or seven, it gets pretty hectic. And the problem is, we already have so many people that go over that bridge that belongs to this town, that's still going to come through this town, to go to Roseville, and, and Granite Bay, and et cetera. So we can't stop them, okay? We can't, we might put a Batel Bridge, that's what Sarah Myers said one year, and we never did that, that might, but I doubt that the state would let us do that. But all I'm saying is, Roger, Roger's got a good point, and he's representing the, the people that want to be heard. But I wish most of those people that he's representing would stick their butts in these seats, and come and tell us in person what they don't like.
So that's just not the way of today, but anyway, long story short, I just want to go on a record that I don't believe in a lower level of service, so, at the end of the day.
Make, make sure we, that the record does reflect in the project, we never go below D on this project. That's, I just want to make sure, because he slipped.
Well, and I, I just want to go back to, you know, when we so rudely interrupted Mike's presentation and his response to the questions, but I think what people need to understand is, if nothing were built in the plan area, we already have a problem at a couple of intersections. And I'm, I'm going to go back to, you know, I'm glad everybody loves In-N-Out, it's a wonderful place to eat, it's a bad location, because of what we allowed was a mistake that we made when we approved the project to allow those turns, and allow that track, traffic circulation problem to, to come into existence in the first place. So if not one single house gets built, if there's no trip generation from the plan area, there's already a problem during the peak hour, we're trying to fix it. Do I want to live in a community that has, and, and the rest of the day, twenty hours a day, we've got level of service A at that same intersection?
No, you don't.
I'm, I'm sorry, Roger, I'm, you're, you're speculating, and you're talking about.
Is that for real? It's a level of service A for twenty hours a day?
Roger, look at the data, if maybe the problem is you don't understand the data, but, and I'm, I'm happy to help you with it.
I don't know why, I don't understand why, when I, when I sit up here as a duly-elected council member, why, I don't understand data, just because I'm asking questions. So I will ask you to be cordial and respectful and not say things like that.
And I'm trying to, Roger, I was actually talking.
I'm not interrupting you. I'm not interrupting you.
You just did.
Well, no, I, when I'm being attacked, it's like, it doesn't make sense. Up here, it's like, you can't get elected unless you sit in a seat. You can't do this, you can't do that. I'm telling you, I'm a byproduct of folks who don't feel like they're heard. I'm sitting in the same seat you are right now, that you're gonna run for this year. So all I'm saying is just calm down a little bit, and I'm asking questions because maybe I don't understand it. Okay, that's fine, so tell me. I see the traffic daily, I've seen it for the twenty-four years I've lived here. I get it, it is bad. I'm hearing the same thing and I'm seeing the same thing. All I wanna make sure is that we uphold standards for the legacy residents of Folsom, the seventy-seven thousand that live here today, and we protect standards, and they have the same experience in Folsom for the twelve thousand people that are coming here or eleven thousand seven thirty-three via South of Fifty. I'm not against these folks. I didn't rudely interrupt them. Did you felt like I rudely interrupted you?
So, that's not what I meant. We all interrupted him, and then when I was speaking, you interrupted me.
Those are the comments that you make all the time, and it's very absurd. It's just annoying. It really gets to a point where you just need to calm down, seriously.
Okay, so let's kinda wrap up this thing so we can finish up the presentation and then open up for questions.
I'm done. No, I really didn't have a presentation. I just answered questions. I was not interrupted to feel that way at all. But again, Mike McDougal, representing the applicant, more than happy to answer any questions.
I just got one, Mike. Where there used to be the private school that was gonna go in, Country Day or what it was?
Yes, Country Day.
Is that in your, in your area?
No, it's within the Westland Capital Partners Holdings, which was in the, which you had been called the Hillsborough area, now it's called Alder Ranch, but it's not part of this map area.
Okay, when I get to that, I'll have some questions for you.
Andy, any questions for Mike?
Uh, no.
Carrie, any other questions for Mike?
Nope. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. I'm here to answer any further. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have questions for anybody or any other people wanna speak on this item? I don't see any, this is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open this item. Anybody wishing to come down to speak is welcome. We don't have any written requests. Okay, seeing that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And so any further discussion from the council or direction would be appropriate.
I'll just chime in with a few comments as I was listening to everything here. So, so except for jumping off topic a couple of times, has been a really good conversation. You know, I think traffic is something that we all, we obviously all feel, and there is trying to strike this balance. And, you know, I've heard some great points tonight, this balance of, you know, how much asphalt do you put over the ground that might be unused most of the time? That's that balance. And, you know, we kinda quantify that in this level of service discussion. And, and it is, it's, you know, I think, a couple of points I have is that I certainly do have some trust that there are gonna be, there is gonna be some modernization in our ability to deal with traffic that's gonna help over time. I remember, you know, Mark was talking about, you know, the smart signaling that I really think is gonna have a huge impact. Now, how much we rely on that, that's, that's a good question, but I do feel that's important. The other really important piece of this in my mind is, is that I know, having been up here for quite a while, is, is that some of our most significant transportation improvements really come when we finally have all the money in place to build these things. So, so we talk about this East Bidwell-Iron Point Highway fifty bottleneck. And, and there will be tremendous relief there when we complete interchange development at Empire Ranch and Oak Avenue. Those are never, ever front-loaded projects because they're tremendously expensive. I've talked to our city manager and Mark and some of our folks, and I appreciate you guys looking into aggressively trying to kinda come up with phase one A beta, as far as, you know, just getting an on-ramp in one direction can really take a significant amount of traffic just out of that bottleneck. And I am, I am pretty sure, you know, we have these noticeable traffic issues in a number of areas, but that is really the biggest. And, and so to look for relief there, you know, when we, when we sit there and talk amongst ourselves and then also with the residents, that, what I've always noticed is, everyone's a traffic engineer, right, Mark? And anybody going faster than you is a maniac and anybody going slower than you is an idiot. So what that says is, no one's ever really happy in their car, behind, in front, whatever. And, and, you know, it's kind of some important perspective is, is that you don't have the road to yourself. There are gonna be times where there's congestion. And there's a little piece of me that this is kind of the good problem to have, that we can work on resolving, which is, there's been some great development in this community that encourages two things. Vibrant commerce from both residents and others in the region, but also a very active community. You know, we're not a community of people that just wanna sit at home and, because there's a lot to do here. So, you know, we're a little bit of a victim of our own success in a way, but I, you know, I also have a lot of confidence that, you know, whether this is cast as, you know, a level C or a level D standard, that this community and this city council and future city councils, our staff are gonna come up with ways to fix these things. There's, there's always something that comes at us that rises to the top. And, you know, I think Roger and the mayor, you know, talking about, you know, what they're hearing and what we hear, that is, it's a, it's a popular topic and I think, I think for good reason. But I really do, I feel very confident that we're gonna have ultimately, because of impact fees, South of Highway fifty, that we're gonna get two interchange, interchanges built that would not happen otherwise. But again, these don't get built ahead, unfortunately. So there's gonna be a lot of work on the part of future city councils because as we all know, that doesn't just get built with impact fees. You know, we need, you know, Steve on Secog and Carrie on STA, you know, looking for these alternative sources of funding to match local funding to get these things built. But again, my thanks to Everett and Mark for, you know, looking at these things. Mark just gave us a presentation on, you know, working through some of these current bottlenecks in areas that will come into play very soon. So, so, you know, I'm just trying to throw some perspective out there. And, you know, again, based on my, my past actions, I'm very supportive of this. One thing that wasn't pointed out when Steve had the maps up there is those red lines on that map. I mean, you know, those are bike trails that, you know, people be riding on, you know, kind of, you know, ribbons of trails working through the open space down there. And, you know, when Ernie and I first started getting active back in the eighties and nineties, you know, there wasn't one mile of bike trail here. So, so we do work our darndest to make sure growth brings amenities. This aquatic center that was mentioned a couple of times, that wouldn't have gotten built in a town of twenty thousand, but in forty thousand or forty-five thousand, it did get built. So, so that's the job of this council is to make sure we keep bringing great things. But with these great things, one of the sacrifices is there are more people and there is a limitation to how big we wanna build these roads. So, again, I just, and maybe there's a little bit of too much Pollyanna-ish-ness in me, but, you know, I really do think for some of these current bottlenecks, better days are ahead. And, you know, we've got some great people that are gonna work on these problems. So, so for, for those reasons and, you know, I am supportive of this, you know, I, my last point is, is, you know, I was here long before Broadstone and the Parkway and Empire Ranch were built. And when those started to show up on maps and you'd look at them, but boy, those are just beautiful communities, that the people who live in those communities have every right to be very proud and defensive of those communities. We're gonna have the same great people in these areas and, you know, I really start to see it when we have maps up there with, you know, those colors showing the, you know, elementary schools and things of that nature. So, so don't fear the growth, but let's make sure it's done smart. The city has a great history of making sure of that. And, you know, another comment would be, for people who are concerned about this, absolutely, keep sharing those concerns. We need to hear it and respond to it. But we have always responded to these things as a council, as a staff, as a city, I think, as well as you possibly can. So, so with that, I'll, I'll stop there. Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Carrie? I'm, sorry. We've, we've had a lot of discussion since nineteen ninety-eight when we started moving forward with these projects. And there are people that are suggesting that, you know, the plan area should look exactly like north of the freeway. Well, over the course of the last thirty years, we've learned a couple of things. We've learned that really, really wide streets and really, really big intersections lead to speeding the twenty-two hours a day that are not peak hours. And we've seen that in residential neighborhoods where we have really, really wide streets. So we've, you know, tried to move and follow not only engineering trends but people's changes in behavior. And I think that that's very important, that we are in fact considering this in how the infrastructure will be built in the plan area. I think that's a very, very good idea. And I think it's good that we have all learned from, you know, mistakes that were made forty years ago when, you know, when somebody was planning the subdivision that I live in. So I think that's all good. But I, you know, it just occurred to me while I was sitting here that we have historically had, one neighborhood gets upset about whatever the issue of the day is in their neighborhood. Then that issue gets resolved or they quiet down about it and it moves to another neighborhood. I think part of the problem here is that we've gone from the Toma Station to Empire Ranch to Lexington Hills to Willow Creek to north of the river to American River Canyon to the new neighborhood is Facebook. And it's their turn to yell right now. So I'm totally in favor of the project. In fact, I'll move it.
You got a motion for ten sixty-nine, or excuse me, one zero zero six nine? We still have- Obviously more room for discussion, but the motion's on the table. I'll second for further discussion.
I'm not attempting to inhibit any further comments.
No, I understand. No, that's just, you can keep going, we can go for hours if you want. Ernie, Roger? Roger?
I'll disagree with, with Councilmember Moore, and I too agree that the staff is, does a phenomenal job. I agree the city is a great city, that's why I live here. I just, I was elected to serve and I'm serving to the best of my abilities and I believe, you know, that there's some things that me coming to the table, I believe, need to be changed or I can provide my input to. So this is one of those pieces and so, I mean, that's, that's really just it. So the biggest problem I have is I feel like there's, there's sentiment of attack or personal attack on just voicing a concern or a policy change that I think I see. So I wanna work with that with you guys and make sure that I'm not contentious. I just wanna make my point and move on. So with that, I'll yield.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I agree with Roger. When I came on this council ninety years ago, I wasn't quiet. I had, had the advantage of a little bit more fights before I got here and dialogue than Roger had, but I was treated okay. Not so much in closed session, but in private, in public, yeah, that's fine. And that's fine. And this, all these guys I served with, they, you know, we have our opinions. But the final opinion is the city and the people that live in the city. And in no way am I, my remarks should say that the people, the new people that Roger hears, sees more here than I do should be quiet. They should not be quiet, okay? I wasn't quiet, they shouldn't be quiet, okay? And so I say, you know, as far as Roger is concerned, it's just growing pains and you'll be fine. You, 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 we wanna hear from you. And we wanna hear from those that talk to you rather than us. Because we need everybody in this town to have a voice. And whether it's media or, I think our staff work on the publications and our newsletters and that, it's just been tremendous lately. Like getting the word out and telling you things. If you don't know what's going on in this town, then you're just not watching Facebook or coming to these meetings, and all the meetings. We have commissions, you know? You go to the planning commission and there may be two or three people there. Boy, in the olden days, you couldn't get in the door, okay? Because, you know, and, and you, I think what we have to understand here is that we're representing the people that are coming with the input of the people that are here, okay? And we wanna be sure that the people that come, we've done a good job of representing what we think will be good for them and be part of the equality that we have here in this side of the highway. So I'm, I think this is a good project and I think it has all the amenities that we need. But up here, the council people, the ones here now, the ones that are coming, we're the watchdog. And the partner, we're a partner with the developers, okay? It's not an anti-deal, it's just partnership. And sometimes partners get out of line, we bring them back in line, vice versa. So I think that if Roger has heard from anything I told him, I apologize publicly because that's not the intent. But we will have different views. This has been tremendous nine years of different views, but we come together and do the right thing. But that's the way it should be. We're not all alike and we all have people that we have are different friends and they tell us different things. And then we bring it here and we hash it out and we get things done and usually through the staff, which is very accommodating, okay? So I'm just, I'm gonna go for the project, obviously, and, but I'm gonna be a partner watching for the team, so.
Okay. Couple of things that we forgot to, I think Andy made some really, really fine points. And, you know, one example is, you know, when we, the community said, this street's too wide, they're going too fast, was the Toma Station Drive. It used to be four lanes. We heard it, shrunk it to two, put the beautiful median in there. And almost all the accident history, let alone the kids getting clobbered, has almost all been eliminated for that. Conversely, we heard, hey, we're getting choked down when you leave shortly, you know, past, if you're going northbound, so to speak, on East Bidwell. Once you leave Iron Point, guess what we did? It's always been on the books, it's still in the books. We just completed the widening to three lanes on either side, up to just about where, just as you start crossing Oak Avenue Parkway. It's on the plan to continue up to Blue Ravine eventually when those, those other further developments go into play. I bring it up because, again, that's another measure that'll be coming to relieve some of that. It comes down the line as things are getting done, as money's become available. And unfortunately, and Ernie will be as much testament, if not more than I am, this city didn't even collect park fees for a while. We've been playing catch-up forever.
We had to, we had to, we had the ordinance to get the park fees, it took us six years to get them and then we were a thousand dollars short of what we should have been.
So my point is-
But we did the job.
Yeah, so my point is, I mean, I understand and appreciate, everything Roger's saying because we've had to play catch-up on a lot. So those, some of the streets that we could've dealt with before, there was no money 'cause it wasn't gathered at the beginning. It's not completely different than what we did, learning smarter and better ways to do things, which we've done in South of Fifty. So that's also a relief and stuff. So I think Roger's point is very valid, is he just wants to make sure that all the mitigations, the measures, the dollars and the timing are there on a regular, consistent basis. So as these things come up, these things get improved, you will see the reduction of traffic, in my opinion, because the other things we're doing in North of Fifty that have nothing to do with the project, South of Fifty, will also help relieve. So I apologize, Roger, if you think I was attacking, I wasn't. What I was trying to share was not just you, I've heard other people saying that voices aren't being heard. I'm thinking, my goodness, we always are always, always inviting people. We have, in fact, I have an item coming on next meeting to talk about all the ways we put information out, how we invite people to communicate with us. So to make sure that if for some reason somebody doesn't think they're gonna be able to get to us, we're gonna make on a regular basis that people can know how they can get to us. So that's coming in the next meeting. And I think actually, Ernie, your comment was probably one of the best I've heard in a very long time. Like anything, you know, we sit, us five of us are gonna create something that we have to look five, ten, twenty, in this case, thirty and forty years down the line because we're not gonna be here when these other people start coming. It's exactly the same as when Empire Ranch was annexed in eighty-four. Those people did the best they could at the time for the people that weren't even here. So when I hear, and I appreciate exactly what you're saying, Roger, 'cause it's one of those, again, dilemmas where a lot of stuff occurred before, a lot of people, even though we had about eighty-four percent of our city was here, that's, that population that's here today, eighty-four percent of these people made this plan, voted on it, moved forward. But doesn't mean, and nor will we ever, disregard, disrespect the voices of the people that have come after the fact. But we also have to respect, just like I first came on in ninety-four, I wasn't a fan at all, and still not, of a lot of stuff that was in the eighty-eight general plan, case in point, what I just talked about, the park fees or lack thereof, some of the transportation fees, lack thereof. I mean, there was a lot of unfortunate things that occurred there. State law and our city ordinances have been tightened up and cleaned up to where we don't repeat that mistake. Quite the opposite, we've been, most times, get in front of it. So, so like Ernie said, we may have some disagreements as far as ideologies, viewpoints and so on and so forth, but the good thing about this council and most previous councils I've sat on, we walk out the door, we're still friends. You know, we're only putting our foot forward on base on what we're hearing, what our personal ideology is, personal experiences are. And Roger, I went through the same thing the first couple of years in the city council. These guys were talking about stuff and I'm sitting there like a deer in headlights 'cause nobody, I didn't have a clue what they were talking about. So there is a learning curve. We will make sure that you're brought up to speed sooner than later on a lot of stuff that's gonna be seen more often. And again, when my closing comments, you hear some of my ideas to regard that. But I think overall, we're still implementing the community plan, we're still adhering to the community policy, which is the street width, the bike trails. We actually went a step further with, like I said, the walkable, work, live, play, walkable town center and certainly the transit, the Bus Rapid Transit Corridor, the connector, all that stuff, when this plays out thirty to forty years from now. This conversation, I hope that whoever's sitting up here won't even have to worry about North of Fifty or South of Fifty 'cause we finally did something right. And I think there's more right, as Andy said, when those interchanges come online, it'd be a huge reduction, all you measure all these things. So appreciate the applicant, I certainly really appreciate the staff for all the years you've been working on this. I certainly really appreciate the staff for all the years you've been working on this. Some of us had more hair in blonde when we started. And so it's nice to see some of these things actually come to fruition. And I'm excited about what's going to happen south. But I will assure you, we will listen and make tweaks and adjustments as necessary, because that is part of what this community expects us to do, especially for the people that are coming. So all voices, I assure you, Roger, will be heard on a regular, continuous basis. And if not, then someone needs to tell us that we do a better job of making sure we, we communicate with you. So if there's any further comments?
Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
No.
Howell?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes. Okay, call the next item, please.
Next item is new business item 10A. This is resolution number 10,079, a resolution authorizing the issuance of the City of Folsom CFD number 16, the islands at Park Shore, improvement area number one, special tax bond, series 2018, the execution and delivery of a master indenture, a first supplemental indenture, a bond purchase contract, an official statement, a continuing disclosure certificate, and certain other actions in connection with the bonds.
Okay.
Please tell us all about that, Jim.
Some more, Jim. I was riveted from the very first financial report, so keep it running.
I'll, I'll try. So you've had mayor, members of the council, most of the night's been spent on CFDs, and this is no exception. This one's a little different, and we're asking you with CFD 16 to authorize the issuance of bonds for this project. You approved the formation of this district in 2015. The bonds will provide for and finance the public facilities in this development, including street utilities and landscaping and park improvements, and also some development-related fees. This is a visual of the development along Park Shore, a recent picture of it. The total cost of the public facilities is $4,900,000. The, we are proposing to issue these bonds in an amount not to exceed $6 million. And that will include the acquisition construction, the development-related fees, but also a debt service reserve and the cost of issuance would be part of that. The total assessed and appraised value of the property is $55.2 million. This issuance of bonds would be in compliance with your city policies. The lien, value-to-lien ratio has to exceed three to one, and it's at 8.7 to one. The projected tax burden has to be less than 2.0, and it's at 1.7 percent. By taking these actions, you'll approve the form of various required documents that Krista read out for you, so I don't have to. Thank you, Krista. And we'll authorize the officers of the city to execute those documents and take such actions necessary for the issuance of these bonds. And with that, we'd recommend approval of resolution 10,079, authorizing issuance of the special tax bonds.
You okay with that?
Do you have a call to carry on this?
No.
No.
I'll move resolution 10079.
I will second it.
Okay. Any questions or comments to Mr. Francis? As always, riveting. Okay. We've got a motion, a second call, the roll, please.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes. Next item, I believe, is
City Manager reports.
Mr. Palmer?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I have no report this evening.
Okay. Roger, you want to start your end this evening?
I'm good. I think I said enough today. Thank you.
We'll never, never turn off your mic.
Never, never enough.
Andy?
Just that I've been enjoying the Olympics and not enjoying not watching the Olympics right now. But congratulations to Kelly Clark, who we know is a Folsom resident these days. And she finished fourth, but this was, I believe, her fifth, fifth Olympics.
And she got a shout-out last night as a Folsom resident.
She did. And, and I just got to say, you know, I've, I've never met Kelly, but everything I've read about her was just what a classy individual who just happens to be a world-class athlete. So, so my congratulations to all the U.S. Olympians and specifically Kelly for her efforts the other day.
Carrie? Just a reminder for everybody to drive carefully, within the speed limit, stay in your lane, pretend your mother's behind you. With that, I'll say goodnight.
Vice Mayor?
Well, you all know my Air Force background. And 10 days ago, I tried to demonstrate it as I left a tremendous ballgame over at the high school. Unbeknownst to my feet, there was a curve in front of me and I didn't see it. So that curve launched me into a very nice, in the aquatic center, it would be a belly flop. Over there is a real hard landing from an Air Force, you know. They always told me when I became an officer, if I ever get the airplane up, I could fly it. But I'd either die getting it up or crash coming in the back. So I proceeded to do a very big landing on my chest and was very embarrassed. And later on, in the last 10 days, I've been very sore. 83-year-old guys don't do that stuff. Not more than once, or they're going to be in trouble. So I appreciate all the help from the city. I had to cancel some things I had to do, but I'm coming back. So I apologize for my sneezing and coughing and all that, but there's nothing I could do about it. Another week I should be back in operation. But some of the, I missed the soccer tournament this weekend, but I just couldn't make it. But again, to Roger, he's just getting to be part of the crew. And what happened tonight, this happens, has happened in the past. It's no big deal. That's all.
I agree. It was just a discussion. It was a good discussion, too. So, Mr. City Attorney, I'm doing my legal part here. So last month, I was able to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors in, in the winter meeting in Washington, DC. And my primary focus, being put back on the Transportation Committee, was the, obviously, learning and understanding and just trying to get a grip on the new infrastructure package coming out of Washington, DC. It was a very, very interesting conversation. Actually, I did a couple of interviews back here, while I was there, back here in Sacramento. And, you know, what I'm very proud of, I have to say, this region is remarkably ahead of most areas of the country. I mean, you hear about, you know, Portland this, or Kansas City that, and so on and so forth. But when you really look at what we do as a region, let alone what I could easily say we do as a city compared to what I heard back there, we are way, way ahead of, of, I would say, the majority of the country by far, to say the least. We have more room to do things. I think this transportation bill is definitely going to be confusing. It's definitely be very competitive. The unfortunate thing, I know where they're going to put some of the fees to pay for this, and that's called what we call the G-fees, the fees you will pay when you finance a house, kind of like what they did with the Obamacare. They put the fees into the Obamacare bill, and it comes from people that are buying homes or refinancing homes. So this, there'll be another round of some fees included in some of those things, which, you know, I understand. What I don't appreciate is that, you know, what we made loud and clear when we were back there is, you know, if we're going to raise billions of dollars to pay for infrastructure across the country, then everybody needs to pay their fair share, not just people with homeownership. And that, that's very disturbing. And I think there's going to be a big battle about that one. So to that end, I'll be doing some more follow-up work in DC in March. Also going to be doing a lot of waters, things, lobbying, you name it, asking, begging for money as well with Marcus and his people. That'll be exciting, because again, there's so many new rules and regulations that Carrie mentioned earlier, and the weird things going back there. It's a whole new ballgame. It's very confusing. And we're doing the best we can to try to figure it out before we get there. And I appreciate certainly Everett, all your help. Some of the lobbyists that we pay for that have helped us, including the Dawson Group when I was back there in January, talking about some of the water issues already. We're also contingent of us, and Roger, I know you weren't there at the last one, but we have our regular contingent in Monterey for the ICSC. So I hope you can join the city manager and I and about, it looks like seven or eight other board members. I think it's a great experience and opportunity for you to see how we bring people in this city. So I'll, I'll fill you in offline to get you to get to that one, because I think it's a great experience, another opportunity as your learning curve starts to come up, and very dramatically. So I applaud you on, on diving in as hard as you are. So please, I hope you don't take anything personal tonight. It was just a discussion. We like to make everybody inclusive on that discussion, and I think we're doing pretty good. So to that end, I want to throw it out to my colleagues for consideration. And certainly, if you have comments or questions, please forward to city manager. But my proposal, as I mentioned last meeting, was to set up a series of committees with the city council, because there's so much going on, that I'm using the same process that we agreed on before when we were doing not only the annexation, but certainly after the annexation, we did two-by-twos and we took on specific roles. Andy and Ernie were parks. I know Jeff and I were specific plans. And I know Carrie and I and others were everything else, because her and I have been living this the longest. So initially, what I have in mind now, and again, this is just a throw-out, I'd like to hear your guys' comments, either back to me directly or to the city manager, within the legal limits of the law, of course. That's why I'm announcing it publicly, that I would like to form what I call an infrastructure two-by-two. And I'd like to be myself and Councilmember Gaylord, taking, as I call it, experience with somebody that's going to be taking the helm after I'm gone. We also made him the alternate of SECOG, which is also a lot of infrastructure-type stuff and kind of move that. So Roger, you have comments, you can give back to me or certainly city manager. Then I'm also asked Andy and Ernie to consider what I call a budget-revenue two-by-two. Again, we have a lot of things going on. I think the way Jim, certainly his staff and the manager present the budget and stuff like that, where we're concerned is, you know, how, how are we competing in the region compared to everybody else? Are our revenues there? Are projections there? Is, is our, I mean, everything's there to keep us vibrant and how are we competing against some of the others? So I'm asking them to look into that. And you would be willing to do a two-by-two, certainly share your yeses or nays with the, with the manager. And again, through the legal limits of the city attorney's office, it can be conveyed back to me. And then Carrie and I are going to talk offline about a couple of things I have in mind that I would like to work with her on, because of her expertise and experience, there's a lot of stuff. So I'm really not ready to announce what her and I are going to do, because I'd like to go through it. But suffice to say, there's another lot of increments, and one of them being, I need your expertise and background experience for the transportation stuff, because I know we're going to be working on a lot of that before I leave and my term is up this year. So I want you guys to consider that. Send a note to the city manager so we can compile that information at the appropriate time with the guidance of the city attorney, make sure we don't violate any laws. Then we'll make those things official and move forward from there. But that's, that's my general idea right now for considering. So from there, I don't have any other comments. And thank you, everybody. Congratulations, Kelly. And with that meeting adjourned, 8:33.